Well, everyone, it's ten o'clock, ten AM on Tuesday, November twenty eighth. I'm calling this meeting, the Standing Finance Committee. We can't meet services, board of directors to order. We have a forum. The one member absent at this point is Scott McCann, but Vice President McDowell, Dave, Mr. Pearson, this Chrisman, and our new member Keith Hendrickson are all here. So, welcome, welcome, Keith.
Thank you.
Now, I don't know, as Keith, you want to, you want to say anything to the group to introduce yourself? Because you taught to the, the board, you know?
Yeah, but I haven't met any of you prior to now, yeah. Well, let's see. My wife and I came to Cambria in nineteen ninety nine, and initially we lived down on, along the coast there, and then bought a house up on Happy Hill, remodeled that, and we've been there for, since two thousand, so we're getting close to twenty five years, it's the longest I've ever lived in a single house in my lifetime. My wife is Maria Apostolais, and you may know Maria, she's a flutist, and recently during COVID, taught herself how to play the harp, she does outreach for hospice and people in hospitals and shut-ins and stuff. She'll, she goes and plays music for them, she also has been bedside at, when they crossed over too, so that's her focus is really on all of that. I'm in my last, a couple of days shy, but my last month of employment, I'll be retiring at the end of the year. Yay, I work out at Diablo Canyon. I'm in charge of the station's respirator program and also the health physics instrument programs. And so, so that's been my job for the last seventeen years. Prior to that, I worked for Caltrans for a brief while doing long-range planning, and in fact, for, at one of the North Coast Advisory Council meetings, I presented a discussion on, on the long-range focus of the highway systems and Salusfistle counties in particular for, for these folks. This is back around two thousand and four, three timeframe, something like that, anyway. Got a couple of dogs, they're risky dogs, and, and life is very good.
Yeah, well, thank you, thank you for volunteering and.
My pleasure.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Try to keep you occupied here, not, not overboard. Occupied. Thank you, I don't have a chairman's report, other than just, I guess my introduction of Mr. Henderson was sort of a chairman's report. On item B, community member communications, this is the time for any of you to make a brief announcement or a brief report on your activities, not, this doesn't pertain to the ad hoc committees, subcommittees, but this is just anything you want to share with the committee that's relevant to us. Hearing nothing, I'll move on, the ad hoc subcommittee reports. There are three active ad hoc subcommittees, we will, the, the item, item B in regular business is the product of the work of the Budget Policy Committee subcommittee, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask for a report from that committee at this point. I, maybe I'll ask though, I'd like to ask to, either the Revenue Enhancement Committee subcommittee, which Mr. Pearson chairs, or the Reserve Policy Subcommittee have anything to share with us, you know, on their activities and their activities here, in the past month, their activities going forward?
Nothing from, on, on my part from the reserve, not reserve. Just went out of my head, I've been out of town.
New enhancement.
Revenue, no, not revenue enhancement, the third one, the one that I'm on.
Reserve.
You're on reserve.
You're on reserve, you're on the reserve.
Is it reserve? It is. I know. Yeah, yeah, anyway, I've been on vacation and, and I've been out of town and there's nothing to my end, anyway.
I sometimes forget too. No, yeah, yeah, so you, the, when you were gone, the third position was filled by Scott McCann. He volunteered for that, so this is you, Dave and Scott, on that committee. I, I don't think there's anything new from that group.
He's not, no, he's revenue enhancement.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not.
It's just Scott and Karen that I have on it so far.
Yeah, okay, good. See, I sometimes get these, I have this. So that's actually, this, this will get, in the next item, we might talk about filling some of those positions. And there's anything on, so revenue enhancement is, it's on hold until.
I have a bunch.
Oh, you do that, so that's good, that's good.
Yeah, and in January, at the January meeting, I think is the time for us to do a formal report to this group, so that we can discuss and consider sending it to the.
Yeah.
Because we're about, we're about done, I mean, there's lots of options, but I think those options are pretty much up to the board, not really up to us, we can make up some recommendations, but there were a couple of things that were asked for us to look at a little bit farther. Public funding of the initial feasibility study on incorporation was one of them. I contacted, I ended up contacting the same business, same company that did the reports back in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, they actually did two studies. One study was the overall feasibility, and the other study was comparing us to other cities.
Yep.
So, I actually got ahold of them, and the guy that did those two reports still works there. Andy Belknap. So, Mr. Belknap and I had a video conference, and I started out by telling him, you know, we just wanted to have some idea, I said, I, I need some ideas to what it would cost to do an update of those studies in order to, you know, either talk to business leaders like Tom suggested, or whatever, or, or at least let the CCSD know what, what it would cost them to update. So, he, he looked at him while we were online, and, or he had before, and he said, well, what's changed in Cambria, so we talked about it these days, and he said, not much, huh? And really, if you read those two reports, not much has changed. And he said, so he's going, okay, so, uh, where are you at on that whole thing, and I started explaining to him, and he said, well, you know, number one, you're going to get better services than the county is providing you now if you become a city, because you'll just, you'll just be able to do more things for yourselves. He says, like land use, you'll have your own land use, and you won't have to go to the county, and I said, well, we're not running land use neither is the county, the Coastal Commission really runs our land use, because they're the ones that are bucking everything we do because of the water situation, he said, oh, okay, well, then that's not a problem, he said, so the big question is revenues, so I told him what I found out about the TOT tax and the sales tax. And he, he said, yep, that's about figures, he said, you are a cash cow for the county, because they are taking all that TOT tax, and you're not getting any of it back. He said, they're giving you services, but nothing more than the rest of the county is getting, and they're really getting a lot. And his final conclusion was two things, going, there's no reason to update the feasibility studies, so he's going to give me a proposal to help us negotiate with the county. Because you have to do this revenue neutrality, but he said, that won't be a problem, because you'll be able to increase TOT, increase your sales tax, and he said, you people would be foolish not to incorporate.
Wow.
That was his opinion, and of course, you know, he's looking at it over here, he has no idea what's going on.
Can we get a copy of, or can we access those reports?
Oh, yeah, I, I can, I can send.
Yeah, we sent you one, because, yeah, we had, we had them at the meeting, I guess, too, actually, we had them at the meeting when we talked about this two times ago, yeah, there, there are two, one was done in the mid nineties for, that was done by, I forgot, or, well, the agency permission, then there was two thousand and five, I think. That was a feasibility study by a private, that was by any, this company that.
Yeah, this company did.
And this, yeah, you just, I did the earlier one.
Two thousand and four, two thousand.
Two thousand and five. And that was.
Those, those are the ones that really changed.
Those are the ones that are.
From ninety five.
Yeah. The laws have changed lots, and some of the formulas have changed, it's ninety five, it's two thousand and five. So, yeah, I'll make sure to get you.
Just that, any way, say, that the tax that the county collects, that they can tip back a little bit to us?
Well, they're already playing, they don't have that, but, so, they're not, they're not. I mean, that's an option that I have, that we can present, but.
Why would they?
Yeah.
Why would they, the, the TOT tax, the nine, the nine cents, the, the basic TOT tax, I think, the nine cents, so it's just into the general fund, everything else in the general fund, sales tax and everything, so you're asking them to basically carve out part of the general fund for Cambria, which is, it's a big ask.
Bring it back.
Or even giving us a bigger slice of property tax or something like that.
That's the same problem.
They're just not going to.
Interesting.
Okay, so, 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 so he's going to give me that proposal, he said he'd probably have to mean by the end of this week, so we'd have ideas what that would cost us for him to sit next to us when we go to the county, because he said, you want somebody on your side that is able to help you negotiate that. He said, we could sit there and say, well, okay, we'll do that for year one and two, but year three, year four, year five, until it's reduced, okay, anyway, so.
It's an option.
I'll have that. Asking FFRP again to sit down and talk to us, and Kitty says she will. She's very busy until Songs of the Season, which is this Saturday at the meeting, and she said, following after that, she will be able to sit down with Scott and I again and chat about it, but I don't think we're going to get any part of it, and we didn't feel. Um, I will, you know, I'll, I'll try to answer, give a little more discussion by saying, well, what if the CCSDs told you that, you know, they're going to put a cap on the amount of money we're going to spend on ranch, at two thousand dollars, like that. See what they say, but.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we're going to get anywhere there. Funding open space with a benefit tax or a special tax, I think that is probably option number one. I think going for open space instead of fires probably had a better chance, but, again, that's up to the board eventually, for them to decide. Uh, Tom came up with another one about CCHD and us basically transferring the fire department to CCH. And I talked to Matt and to Chief Berkey, and they both.
Oh, it's like going to Cal Fire.
They, they each gave me ten different reasons as to why that would be a, nobody, it wouldn't work, bad idea, et cetera, et cetera, so cross that one off the list. Um, so I think, January, if we get out on the schedule, I'll have a full report, written report done and sent to everybody through HALE. Um, and we can talk about it, talk about the options, and make a, make some recommendations, maybe to the board, and I think it's time to go to let the board look at it and say what they want to do, and I think, I called the county this morning to try to find out, if you want to put in a initiative on the ballot, you have to get it to them by a certain date. So I called them and asked them for that date. Actually, I got a, well, I'll have to look, and they'll call me back. Um, but, I think it's something like May, you have to have that.
This would be, this would be for, is it for incorporation and the taxes?
No, not incorporation.
Oh, this is such a, oh, this.
For the benefit tax or special tax.
Special tax, yeah.
Whichever.
Incorporation is much longer, yeah.
No, the incorporation would take a couple of years.
You can't get a bond. You can't stop holding a bond.
Wouldn't think so, that'd be for capital, this is for operating, this is for operations, it's, it'd be like a personal tax, yeah.
It'd be, yeah, either a benefit assessment or a special tax.
What was the date on that, you said?
May. I, I, my guess was May, I, when we did the fire thing, I think it was May, but they're going to get back to me and let me know, and I also asked them to tell me how much that would cost, because they're going to charge us something, they charge us a fee for our election of CCSD reps, which will happen in the next November.
It's not a special election, it's not a super high.
Right, I think it's like ten grand.
Ten, or something, yes, something like that, so.
Extra.
Adding, adding, basically add line to the ballot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they got to count them, and they got to go through that.
Yeah.
Everything, so they're going to get back to me, and I'll have all that information, so in January, you'll get a full report, and we can discuss it, and go from there.
So, on your strategic plan, is there any options or any suggestions for increasing, is that part of your plan, or can that be put on your plan, and that way you can have a, a conversation about these items?
I think, yeah, no, I, I think, but we are going to be reviewing the, I think, I was going to say, we, we do what we're going to do, like.
To develop.
Yes.
Revenue opportunities.
Right, right, it's there, and that, and, and we're going to be doing a, an updated plan uh, in February, actually, probably, and, you know, the system's changed somewhat, it's not every six months we go back to do this, this update, we're going to do it annually, and it's, it's going to be based on the goals we've already set, the, the strategic goals we've already set, this will be an update of what we will need to do in the coming year to meet those goals, and I mean, somebody may change some things, and they keep thinking, you know, some objectives the way they are, but Ms. Prince is right, I think you have, we, we have a, we have a revenue component, yeah, I, I think it's related to, is it in, in the section on fire and or parks and rec, I think it's in fire, but there is related to that, and, and so, this general fund, I mean, general fund is, general fund is those two things, basically. Uh, and not part of it, facilities and resources and fire, so it's, it's tied in, I think, with those, with both of those, actually, as an objective. Which is why this, which is what this committee, subcommittee came out of, actually. So, yeah, we will return to that, and I think, I'm sure we'll renew it, and we'll, we'll restate it as an objective for the coming year, which means, and we might refer, obviously, change details of it, change some details of it as to what we're exactly going for, and maybe get more specific. One more question for Dave. Do you get a sense, now you've been around the board quite a while, do you get a sense from the, of people you know on the CCSD board and in the community that there's support for incorporation, that, because I hear a lot of, I've heard social media and other places, that there's skepticism about it, in the past, there was skepticism about it.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of skepticism, but and I, I think what it comes down to is, number one, if you go to NCAZ meetings and, and other meetings, there's a lot of counties not doing it up north, okay, they're not doing it up on roads, and I do it on parks, and I do it up on, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so that's one reason to incorporate. The other is, we are, you know, being strapped for revenue. So, ladies and gentlemen, you can either tax yourself through an assessment or special tax, or you can tax the business through TOT and sales tax, so which would you rather do? So that would be my only real argument for incorporation would be, look, we need the revenue, so which is, which one do you want to swallow, and if they'd rather have the benefit assessment tax, stay um, you know, part of the county, that's, that's cool, you know, that's fine, I think, I think that's what my personal opinion is, that's what the board should do next, is do that step. Put that out for a vote, if that passes, wonderful, done, if it doesn't pass, then I think the only thing you can look at is incorporation.
Thank you. Any comments, questions or comments?
Just because I'm brand new to this, and I don't have any exposure to the discussions that, that you've already had, I think that by and large, people just don't know, they don't, they have no idea what incorporation, I mean, there are, there's going to be a nucleus, and there are those, those will be the loud ones that will be at NCAZ meetings, yeah, but by and large, I think most of the people are just too busy with their lives, and they expect the volunteers that we have sitting here to come up with a solution so that they can continue on with taking care of kids and grandkids, and, and they just don't know, they don't know the, the things that you were talking about as far as the advantage, disadvantages, they just don't know what those are, and um, and then the baby starts to cry, and then it doesn't matter, because that, my priorities just are instantly changed back, or somebody calls in sick, and now I've got to pull the double shift. I just think that we, we really have a task at hand to take and educate the people as to what it is, even those that don't want to come to meetings, the ones that are sitting home watching Cheers tonight, like me, that, you know, we, we need to reach out to them, yeah, we need to get to them so that they can voice their opinion and let us know what they want, but have enough educated understanding of what the pluses and minuses are.
So, I think, that's, it's a good general point about all we do.
Yeah.
Everything we do, it's particularly this, I'm, I'm curious, you have anything, any comments, right?
I have.
Yeah. Yeah, my, my sense is that, I sense the opposition to it, interestingly, from there's a, there's a sense it will become bigger somehow, or a city, it's an emotional thing, uh, which has a growth component to it, I get the sense that people think that, and also, there is a, and you mentioned the TOT tax in particular, that prior, the last, the last two times it was discussed by the board, and those studies were done, ninety nine, five, and two thousand and five, there wasn't any real proposal for a increasing of the bed tax, it was just simply the current tax base. The current tax base is not much, not, not quite enough uh, for maintaining the services we want, but, no, I don't, I don't remember any public discussion about raising the obvious taxes, you know, the ones that could be, the two cents, something.
The, the, the two thousand and five, that um, was done, basically stated at the end, the conclusion, that the only way that incorporation would make any sense is if the TOT was was raised.
And they didn't go forward with it.
And, and so nobody said, well, hell, and of course, the TOT back then wasn't as much money, it's a lot of money now, it's a lot of money, it's five million dollars a year. Nine percent, nine percent tax earns the county five million dollars a year.
That, that particular tax, is that a resort fee, or is that additional?
No.
Can you tap into a resort fee and have it come back?
Oh, no.
Before we go, I, I can't, it's, it goes right, right to the county, it's, the county's money, I can't. I've been informed, there's actually someone, yeah, there's a public comment, we should have take public comment, and then we should move on, because it's not a business, I can't get a discussion about it. We're still, just, just to ask some questions now at this point, uh, there is a hand raise, the public moment on Zoom, this Shannon Zellman.
Can you hear me?
Hear you, thank you, go ahead, Ms. Zellman.
Um, I was on that incorporation committee back in, whatever it was, two thousand and fourteen, um, and I, it was very interesting, I think the actual official language or, um, record says that it was unanimously voted down, incorporation was unanimously voted down, um, but that is inaccurate, I actually voted for incorporation, um, and it was a very interesting look into what we are getting back from the county as far as, uh, infrastructure and services, and what we give to the county, um, and the county was, was the one that reached out to us to have us look into corporate, incorporation, they were very supportive of the whole thing. Um, and I think that in general, that group was made up entirely of people over sixty-five and retired, with the exception of myself, and, um, no one in, on the group had been there more than, and can't live in Cambria for more than five years. Um, so I think you're absolutely right, and that the general consensus is that it will change the town into a city, which is inaccurate, and that people don't really understand what incorporation means.
Yeah, thank you, I, I have a question, but is, is this, was this a, you said twenty fourteen committee, commission, what, it was that, as an NCAZ?
It wasn't, no, it wasn't twenty fourteen, it wasn't twenty fourteen, it was before that.
Twenty oh four.
Twenty oh four, yeah, yeah.
And that was something that was in connection with this feasibility study.
Correct.
Right. That's very good to know, thank you, and, um, did you have any, any more comment?
Um, I'm born and raised Cambrian, and I'm all for incorporation, and if we look into it again, I would love to volunteer to be part of it.
Yeah, thank you, very, very much.
Great, Jen, um, I think I have your email, I'll send you all the information I have, just so that you're up to date.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, any more public comments on Zoom? Oh. Dan, Ms. Zellman, you still there? Your hands still raised, your hands still raised, are you, are you finished, okay, good, thank you, thank you, okay, so, uh, so that was the, that was our report from the Revenue Enhancement Subcommittee, uh, I don't know, we have, we had, and I think the special one was saying about the budget, the Reserve Committee has not been active since last month, so we'll move on. Item app is ad hoc subcommittee appointments, and uh, we've kind of got, the membership roster, um, we have two, in, with our committee structure, which is actually six members, because I'm, I, I as chair is the sixth member, and the five appointees make up six in all, we have the ability to have ad hoc committees of three members, uh, and, and they're not forums of the, of the four committees, so, there are, there are, at this point, two openings. I mean, committees can also operate as two members, I mean, it's not, it's not impossible, but it's nice to have uh, full participation, uh, the reserve policy is, um, that is Scott and Karen, uh, and then the um, general fund revenue, I think, is Dave, Dave and Scott, and there's another, there's an opening there too, so I would, if you don't mind, I mean, I would appoint, you know, Keith to vote.
It's not going out.
What was, what was the third one, because I got the revenue enhancement and then the reserve policy.
That, that, Dave gave the, gave the report on today.
Yep.
And the budget.
Budget, budget, budget. Yeah, but also, see, budget is, um, Sid, Cheryl, and, uh, Dave Pearson. So there is an opening, right?
Yeah, we're going to be done today.
Hopefully, we don't.
Hopefully, we're done with it, but, but we might, we might restart it, we might restart it next year, but for now, they're going to be, it's going to be inactive until we, we give them the new, they'll have a new task essentially, I think, with the ideas. It's related, but it's related, but it's not, so maybe we can wait, uh, but, um, sure, you want to, you want to be in the two that on.
That are currently going?
Revenue, yeah, currently going, revenue, budget policy, revenue and reserve policy.
Yep. You know, my only, my only concern is that for this next month, I'm still very much engaged in the line of handoff to my um, compadre that's taken over my positions, and so, the, after the first of the year, my time becomes mine, but for December, yet, I still have some, um, some baggage to deal with there.
Well, maybe, well, so. Well, on my committee.
Yeah.
We probably won't meet again until Jan.
Oh, right, okay, yeah.
Because then we'll basically put together the final report to the committee.
Yeah, and you're going to send me some homework anyway.
And I'll send you some stuff, right, and then we meet in January, we get that report going.
Great.
And we'll be done.
Okay.
Hopefully, and.
And I can't imagine that we're going to do anything in December.
Okay, yeah, then, never mind.
Everything, it sort of gets tabled through the beginning of the year.
Sure.
To, to account for your time.
We're not, we're not meeting in December, and there's no need for, um, yeah, I mean, any, any work, you know, everybody has a lot of other things to do, so, so, and, and as, as for the other committees, the budget policy committee, we're going to, we'll, we'll meet at our, at our, say, January meeting, or early in the year, we'll go back to this, there's the list of subcommittees and see what we, what we have, and so we want to either restart or new committees, and then we'll, we can, you can play musical chairs and shift, shift around, uh, if your heart's content, but for now, Mr. Henderson is on the. You can play musical chairs and shift, shift around uh, if your heart's content, but for now, Mr. Henderson is on the, let me get this right. The revenue enhancement committee and the reserve policy. Any uh, public comments on? Thank you, uh, moving on to public comments, general public comment on agenda items, special meeting, so. Uh, any members of the public who are here, no one's here in person, but we're here by Zoom. Uh, can comment on items that are on the agenda, business items. And if you want to get a refresher on that, one of them is the budget policy committee report, the one is the um, discussion of our meeting dates. Uh, anyone out there interested in commenting on those items?
Haley, who's, who's? Can you tell us?
I have um. Who's anybody Zoom, you have, you have it, I just, I don't have anybody. Yeah, just two, there is one hand raised, Shannon Sullivan. Ms. Sullivan, go ahead.
Okay, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure that I'm addressing the budget item, but I, or I mean the item on agenda, but I think I am. And I, I really have a question around pros and the funding of pros. Because I looked up on LAFCO to see what our five divisions were for the C C S D. Um, we have the executive division, administrative division, fire and safety division. Utilities, which is water and wastewater, and the parks, recreation and open space division. Of which maintenance of Cambria as a whole or maintenance and upkeep. Of the Fiskleny Ranch, Bets Hall and C C S D owned properties are included. Um, so I just kind of have a um, kind of a vague question around why the budget isn't organized that way and. Does pros have any uh, have a line item in the budget?
Yes. Thank you, it's, it has a line item, well, we can talk, we, we will discuss that, but um.
Bigger discussion, not be able to fully get into now and then. To believe that it might be brought up um, at the pros meeting.
It is, at, at this point, it um, in the budgets up to now, it's had a separate. Separate departmental status, I think the um. Uh, it may be, it's still, it's still a line, I mean, there's still be line item for those activities that are assigned. Whatever activities are assigned to pros, but it's not a departmental budget, right, it's not at that level departmental budget, I think that's what the. But we, I mean, maybe we can address that, sounds like Ms. Prince is saying, and that needs to be addressed in more detail, maybe at the um. Prost committee meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's a larger discussion, so I feel like maybe I should talk to the chair of that committee. And we can get it, and I know that he's been asking questions, so it might be better suited to be a bigger discussion on their agenda. Um, we will, and I will touch base on it when we go over the budget policy.
Thank you.
Because we are suggesting changes.
I think any other uh, public comment? Hey, everyone, um, moving on to consent agenda, item three, uh, we have two, basically two minutes. Uh, two second minutes to, to, on the consent agenda. Uh, is there anybody who wants to um, make a change or a correction to either of the minutes?
I have a tiny grammatical thing.
Okay, Ms. Christman.
On the October twenty-fourth minutes, H three A. My last name is Miss Bill.
That's happens when you're not here.
And that's, that's all I have.
Any other?
Okay, then I would move that we um.
I, I, actually, I had one, I should, I, I had one, which uh, this, this is somewhat odd. Um, it was accurate as to the minutes, uh, this is on page three, uh, seven. At the end of item D, which is discussion and consideration of the finance committee meeting dates. Uh, they're scheduled to the December fifth regular meeting date to November twenty-ninth at ten A M. Was the date given, but what the intent was actually to make it today, the twenty-eighth. So it might be, I don't know how to handle this, because the meetings are actually correct, but the date is wrong. Because we had, we were, we were confused about the date, so I would suggest in the motion that it be noted. Not as a correction, but that it be noted that the actual meeting date agreed on was this Tuesday. Because we were talking both about Tuesday and we've got the number wrong, that can be done. And then with the, the, the correction that Karen noted. I was against that as a motion. Now, is there a motion to that effect?
Yes, I, I saw a move.
And you, do we have a second?
Second, yeah.
Okay, um, it's been moved a second about the consent agenda to be adopted with the uh, changes and um. One change is noted and the uh, clarifying comment is noted. Do I? Take a show of hands? It is approved four zero. Thank you, oh wait, yeah, and I should ask for public comment, was, there was no, yeah, no one had their hand raised, thank you. I had to remind of that sometime because. Have a small icon here and I still haven't really totally gotten used to being the host of Zoom meetings. Where some people are much more practiced at it. Uh, moving on to regular business, uh, the first item is our schedule. And I'm meeting dates for twenty twenty-fourth. Uh, you have a sheet here with the, basically the each month listed in the, in the dates blank. And dates blank and the, in the times blank. I have um, just to get things going here. I, I re, I've written in the fourth Tuesdays of each month, um, so that we can. Which is our, our standard, our standard formula and ten A M. Uh, and I want to sort of get a sense, I'll read them off. You're probably not playing that far ahead, but I want to read them off to, to the committee to see if there are problem base. Uh, the dates as, if it's on the fourth Tuesday, it's twenty, twenty-third of January, twenty-seventh of February. Twenty-sixth of March, twenty-third of April. Oh, twenty-sixth of March, March twenty-sixth, uh, April twenty-third, May twenty-eighth. June twenty-fifth, July twenty-third, August twenty-seventh. September twenty-fourth, October twenty-second, yours are starting to get interesting. Uh, November twenty-sixth and December twenty-fourth.
November twenty-first, thank you.
November, Thanksgiving is two days after that, it's twenty-eight. And of course, Christmas Eve, I have a feeling, now, um, I want to ask on, on that November day, that, well, question for staff and I. I, I maybe I know the answer from my own experience at work, but would you rather have a meeting? Before a big holiday weekend where yours, or after a big holiday weekend? Because I've always never liked having to scramble uh, to get a lot of work done, uh, when I'm gonna be getting out early and I have a lot of things to do. Preparation for a holiday. And I would rather just do it when, you know, if it had, if it could delay it, whatever it was, till after the holiday, I would do that, so I don't know, but. I'm just asking our, the staff, for the staff input on that, if there is a.
I have my opinion. I have no problem meeting on the twenty-sixth, where it's a workday, we, we're on, it's a short week for us. Um, I don't have a problem meeting on the twenty-sixth either.
Really, okay.
But if you all do, I don't mind meeting after either, I mean, um, if you meet after though, that goes in December.
It goes in December, yeah.
Then you can make just one meeting out of two.
Yeah, if you, uh, if you, I would say, I, I was thinking of December tenth, I was thinking of Tuesday, December tenth, to cover both of those. Because obviously, we're not gonna um, uh, meet on years, on Christmas Eve, so. And is every, is.
Scratch November and just.
I mean, this is probably gonna be pretty much this standard procedure, because usually. Our date, our, our fourth Tu, fourth Thursday is always, always close to Christmas. You know, eyes on top of Christmas pretty much, and so it's just not practical. So this is probably what we'll be doing. Are, on, on the tenth. But they meet on, no, um, pros committee now meets the first Tuesday, right? That was.
They do now, but they're changing it to. Third Tuesday. Aren't I need the second?
Second month. So I, I'll throw that out there as a suggested schedule. Any con, uh, first of all, you know, any questions about it? Any public comments? On that schedule.
What time would you guys like to meet?
I'm finally ten still, I mean, what, what are, yeah, that's fine. Any discussion and questions from the board of the committee, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
The only, the only thing is on, on that, in January, I have a commitment in San Diego. And so I, I would be able to call in, it's not that I'm tied up, but I'm down there for two weeks.
Yeah, that's probably a little bit, oh, the, the, the rules on calling in now are very strict. Uh, and um. Yeah, it'd be good to. So you're gonna be, you're gonna actually be gone.
I'll be gone from the sixteenth to the twenty-eighth.
In January?
Of January.
And, and I have a conflict in April, but I was thinking I could call in, but.
Well, no, you, you can, no, here, here's the, here's the, here's the deal with the Brown Act, uh, the, up, as updated, uh, it's good, we didn't know you. Staff can call, there's no requirement, the staff has to be here physically with the person, the general manager. Visiting. That's fine, the um, members of the actual committee or the boards of directors. There, there are very narrow circumstances um, uh, allowing them to. Participate via Zoom, the one that's been used now a couple of times is people who go um.
I had a cold.
If you have, if you're having, if you have a contagious illness, you can stay home, you get, you get basically one year. Um, you can stay home and do it by Zoom, uh, and they, and there's some, you know, you gotta, you have to tell her. Tell, uh, tell us if there's anybody over eighteen that they're with you, a voter, I guess. I mean, it's like that, it's, it's very strict, very strict, okay, and it's very limited. Yeah, you can't, if, if you, if you have a conflict, you can always, you have an excused absence, but you can't participate. And excuse absences, of course, are not, um, unheard of, I mean, it's, you can't, you get, everybody's had been, missed immediately.
Probably gonna be the one in September of next year.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not the end of the world if you have to do that.
Um, can, well, let me ask this, can I zoom in and not participate, can I listen to the proceedings?
You can, you can listen, yeah, you can listen.
Okay, because I, I'm so early in my involvement here, I don't want you guys to be meeting without me, I have a lot of learning to do, so.
Oh, there's a recorded meetings too.
I think, I think also, um, have you on the um, ad hoc, I, I, I have some committees. I would assume the ad hoc subcommittees will meet in January, I think, um.
Yeah.
And you, you should be able to participate in those, maybe schedule, and those, and those schedules are flexible, depending on what their. I can do, so maybe it's just this.
That's fine, as long as I can listen in, then I'm okay.
And you can listen in and, and listen to the meeting. Uh, any other comments or questions? Anyone, anyone else want to suggest different data, like I need any months, because you know, there. You know, there, 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 along, along the way, we might change a date too, have a special meeting, we've done this quite a few times.
No.
Upper renewal, I mean, the membership? Every other years, every new, every, every time there's a new board.
Whereas.
But I didn't know if we were up for renewal next year.
No, not, not.
Not until after there's a new.
May I ask a follow-up question on that, how, what does that entail?
Oh, it's, it's, uh, the, the stat, the procedure is that everybody re-applys.
Okay.
Now, if there are new people, if there's someone who wants to get on, um, they can apply too, so it's, it's, you know, it is a. I don't know anybody who's actually been, you know, moved off a committee during this process, because most people don't. Most people don't apply unless there's an opening and all the current members re-apply, they generally stay on.
Okay.
Unless somebody's, you know, very problematic. That's the process, okay, you got a year to, you got a year to. I'll entertain a motion then, that, that the schedule as we um, proposed, as is proposed here. With December tenth, ten eight, ten A M being the meeting covering both December and November.
I'll move that we adopt the uh, regular meeting schedule as discussed.
One second, I'll take seconds, okay, I'll take, I'll take a roll up, I'll take notes, so, I need to take a little time. I thought you did, it's chair, yeah, it's not, we don't have the, the board procedure, um, Pearson.
Yes.
Uh, Henderson, yes, Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed as far as zero. You're a little more businesslike here, um, or be. We are, we are, you know, public watching. I don't want to make light of anything I'm doing. So this item is the um, return of the uh, reports. Some updates and revisions from the budget policy committees. And Ms. Fritz, do you want to give a, a presentation, or at least a brief presentation of it, as to what this represents? And how it's changed, what it does happen, doesn't happen, essentially.
Yes, so I think, not this was, I put the date, so we were assigned the uh. So the finance committee was assigned to review the budget policy, um, and so we have. Reviewed it a number of times, I don't have the dates, I apologize, but um. It was reviewed and then we went back and um, committee did some more draft, draft changes. Um, and I'll go over those changes, um, and what we have before you today is. Um, there are recommendations to move forward to the board to approve, um. So to approve the budget policy and the changes that have been made, um. So I apologize to you, because you haven't seen the, the before, all of you have reviewed it and so. We changed, um, and this is not a markup version, because it gets a little messy, so this is just the final draft that we've all, um. That we've all been working on, and so, oh, some of the changes were in language, just in general. Uh, updating some of uh, of language, um, in, in some of these sections. Um, and I would say, and uh, Mr. Gray alluded to this. Uh, as far as continuing this subcommittee to talk about the budget policy and really the one sticking point. That we just ended up leaving as is, is um, with the overhead allocation, uh. We changed some of the language in there, but we are suggesting to leave that alone. For this year, because we went through different models, but there are questions that come up with the different departments being able to sustain. Uh, pay for the changes and the admin allocation, um, and so I, I think we all felt that the policy needs to be updated. It was due for an update, but we really need to maybe dig in a little bit deeper to the overhead allocation specifically. So in this iteration of this, you will see it as um, the same as. So in this iteration of this, you will see it as um the same as it's been in the past.
But a lot of clarity was added to the paragraph explaining overhead allocation. When they asked. At least it makes some sense.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, we included um, you know, just even explaining what. The other um. Change, substantial change is with the property tax allocation and with the PROS Commission. Um moving to committee, so the PROS Commission is a department in our. In our structure, and it was allocated part of the property taxes, part of the property tax allocation. Then one point five percent, and so what we're suggesting is that we're eliminating that allocation and moving the one point five percent. To the F and R Department, because F and R Department is the one who operates, does the pro, you know, the pros. Work. The the PROS Department has always just been allocated a very small amount of expenditures, it is not equal to the property tax allocation. It's been based upon what the needs were, and um. Since there's no other committee that has a budget, it's been difficult to spend it, if you look in the budget, the line item has been for grant writer. And for revision to the um community. Um we are working on those things, I think we are using the grant writing funds. This year as well as updating, so so. I guess what I would like to say is that the work can still be done, that PROS want to do, but like any other committee, if they want to spend funding. They would then make a recommendation to the board, and the board would approve it through the either the budget process or. Uh you know, through a special budget adjustment if they if they need, so those funds are still there, they're still available. For use, we would just. Allocate them a little bit. Um so that was the biggest, the the biggest changes.
I, yeah. Any any questions from the committee, or for the um?
I I would recommend that we go ahead and read through. What we, what has been done, for that, at the January meeting. We discussed whether we want to reconstitute the Budget Policy Committee, maybe with different members, in order to. Address the overhead allocation.
Uh before we get, yeah, before we get to discussion or proposal, um first of all, questions. I also have uh one, one person wants to comment, uh Mr. Wilson, so I want to get to him. But any questions about the actual texts and uh wording and all that?
I I have a couple.
Here, okay.
On page twelve. In the first paragraph under item D. The first sentence reads funny to me, funny odd. Budget documents will include an organization chart and 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 here's a comma, a position allocation listing, another comma. I'm saying, I think you want to omit those commas, because that's a real sentence without the commas, and it makes some sense. I don't understand why those commas are there.
I I saw, I I saw, saw that too, I will, I I have I have a few comments on sort of line editing.
Yeah.
To now to one of them, there's things that I think are a couple, just a couple um errors and. Uh you know, punctuation or whatever, or or things that might be done differently, and then.
On page thirteen, in the first uh paragraph. Under item F and in the first paragraph under item G, administrative department in both those paragraphs is not. Capitalized, and I think it is, isn't that right?
It should be. Yeah. Yeah. That's what paragraph was this again?
Um the first paragraph under item F, overhead al- allocation, this is on page thirteen. Uh second line toward the end of the line, administrative department, and then uh at the bottom of the page, the last paragraph. The the second to last line, left of center, administrative department.
Yeah, it actually should be administration department, I think.
How is it on the on the on the budget?
I think.
It's administration.
Administration department. Any others?
Um there's one more.
Okay.
Um in 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 that same paragraph on on uh page thirteen, under overhead allocation. Um toward the end, the one, two, three, four, fourth line. Enterprise funds, and then here's so here's an open parenthesis to tell us what the enterprise funds are, water, comma. Including the W R F, omit that comma and insert the word and. Because water includes the W R F and wastewater, correct? Or am I reading that incorrectly?
Uh actually.
W R F is part of water.
Yeah, and that's what this will say, water, comma, including the W R F and wastewater. Those two.
No, 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 no.
So so the wastewater is separate.
You have to do include W R F, comma, and wastewater.
I'm sorry, and that's, I'm gonna shut up now.
No, that's very helpful. If no further questions, I I had a couple of edits I wanted to. Just propose to, but I want to uh take public comment at this point, so we can hear what uh. Mr. Wilson, I believe, has to say. Wilson.
Thank you, Chairperson Gray, um I may be sounding a little bit like a broken record here on some of the calendaring stuff, but I'm referring specifically. To section two procedures. In section A and section B and and two observations, questions, one. Um my understanding is, when you when we talk about year. Typically, there's the calendar year and the fiscal year, when it comes to these kinds of things. My first question is, when we talk about years, it feels to me. Like we need to be very intentional and clear about what we're talking about here. Is it calendar year, is it fiscal year? And my understanding, the fiscal year for the district is July through June, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I feel like that should be clarified somewhere here in the policy of what the district's fiscal year is. And as required or as necessary, differentiate whether we're talking about calendar year, if appropriate, or fiscal. Year when we say year. My second question is related to in B. I'm I'm confused about the annual budget. Timing, if the fiscal year starts July. But the budget isn't approved until the end of August. Help me understand how that makes sense.
Well said, Jeff.
It is, it is actually, um there's a reason for it.
Okay.
This Chris can, is that, is that the end of your comments, you have anything else you want to say? Because that question does have an answer.
Me, no, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you very much.
So so the budget, uh I I mean, it is somewhat, the timeline is somewhat guided by um. The legislative rules that we have to follow, and so if you look under B. Um the first uh. Uh bullet point there is that we do a preliminary budget. That goes through the Standing Finance Committee typically in May, and it's surely um submitted to the board at its regular June meeting to meet the required statutory adoption deadline. By June thirtieth, so that's really the meat and potatoes of this budget, what gets approved in August. Is after the year end, and after we close out the previous year. The board is approving encumbrances and role, project role forwards. So that August deadline is really only approving those projects to roll forward to be completed in the next year, so.
And reserve allocation.
And reserve, yes, the reserve allocations for the project role forwards, and so really by June thirtieth, the board. Is approving the 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 New Year's operating budget.
So, no, so so just to clear, just just to sum that up, the law, state law requires us to approve a budget. But following fiscal year, before we close books on the current fiscal year, so then you close the books, and the results of that. Are the final budget that's adopted a couple of months later, but you can't. You can't, you have to have a, you have to have the that extra step, because you can't. You know, you you have to say, this is exactly what we spent and raised in this fiscal years, this fiscal year just ended, this is what we have. You know, going forward, this is what we have in reserves, you don't know that until after July first.
Correct.
That's the reason there's that preliminary budget and final budget. But it's true that the, as as a record, as a basic document for what you're going to be spending in the coming fiscal year, the final budget really is. Is uh essentially the same as the preliminary. The all the, the the main budget is the preliminary budget in terms of what we're going to be spending and what our priorities are, what are. Or, you know, the whole, the whole plan.
Yeah, and the government code that we're following is section six, one, 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 zero.
Anyway, uh thank you, Mr. Wilson, anybody, any more public comment, I had a couple of edit editing comments to make myself, but I want to see if. If uh. These weren't covered yet, I don't think they were covered, oh, also a question though, um.
Director Gray, I could add. Some of that language in here, if it makes it clearer.
About.
About the code, this, the government code that we're, I mean, I I understand that we could make, I could make it a little.
Make it useful, and and also, I I don't know, the the fiscal year uh.
I I think those are good suggestions.
Yeah. Because we do, we do, we do dates, specific dates, June thirtieth, for instance, which of course presuppose the fiscal years from July to June. Uh if we were to change to a calendar year, where I don't think, I don't think we even can, can we?
This whole thing is based upon a fiscal year, and so I could easily under procedures or calendaring add a section, just clarifying. That this whole document is fiscal year.
And the fiscal year under state law, I think, for local agencies has to be uh July to June. We're like a, like a corporation, we can change it around or like that. Anyway, uh yeah, I was looking at a couple of uh, first of all, type, typographic things. Under on on page eleven at the bottom, under calendaring. Uh the annual budget must be prepared, presented to the board under the following schedule, colon, I think there you need a bullet indentation and a bullet point. Does that make sense? Yeah, there should be a bullet point there with the um. Yeah, with a. At the top of that page, this is just a matter of 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 wording, um. It is the policy of the County Community Services District that an annual budget will be prepared. I don't know, the sit, the 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 syntax there, as I'm a purist in grammar, I think you don't need the will. It is, it is the policy that the budget be prepared, but that's.
Thanks.
Minor point. The uh. On on page twelve, under D. In the first paragraph. There is a um. Little confusion that's in the series there, I think says budget documents will include an organization chart and comma. A position allocating listing.
Yeah.
On the account of full time. Full employed, period.
That's the same on Karen.
Right, yeah. The next sentence there, the full time equivalent of employees, I think it should be like a full time equivalent counter list of employees. We're missing. And. Then the next paragraph, again, the full time equivalent, whatever you use, list workout. Uh will include only the employee now. That's just a word missing, and then. Many more. Structure. Under structure on page fourteen, wasn't the general manager, the board should that operating with banana objectives. This process, this process is the stuff above, you're talking there, just the references clear. That's back back in, you're talking referring to um section two eight, right? Plan goals and resources. Let me see, this process process is discussed above. So so there's no confusion then, I was wondering, when I read that. I had had a question. Where was this? Structure under H.
Oh, so specify where above.
Specify whereabouts, in section H, where, so. Even though, even if I take it out, maybe, you don't really need it, actually, yeah. At the top of page fourteen, there's a C missing, C C S D Board of Directors. And um. In in that back down in section H. Uh I just, just to make the capitalization consistent. Uh loan repayments, I should have a smaller. Now, I.
But loan proceeds above there would would also have a small P, and so.
Because receipts of funds, beginning fund balance and ending fund balance are kind of titles, I think. Formed titles, now, I I was, I I wanted to know. The, on the um. Over to over to allocation. Just so we we know where, what was changed, there wasn't change made to the, um not to the formula that we're using, but to the. Process description, right? Of how to, how we reach that, like the um.
I mean, this whole section was uh reworded, like the other one. I would have to go back and look at one of the draft copies to see exactly what was changed. I mean, it was reviewed and.
So the.
I like, I like what, I I think this is a good, it is much clearer and logical than it was, I think it's just.
Oh, yeah.
It's improved definitely.
In in structure, the allocation to reserves, that's a, that's a bullet point that comes under. Loan repayments, is that right? I'm I'm on page fourteen, middle of the page, the bullet point for loan repayments.
Yes, yes.
Allocation to reserves is another.
You just need, you just need a paragraph.
And I'm gonna fix those.
I think that's all I've got, I have a general um. Comment, and I don't want to do anything with this, but. Uh we use will, will do so, so generally, we use. Uh will do such, you know, so and so will do such and such, sometimes it's a shell, and I don't, I don't, you know, I think it might be. You know, nice, uh be consistent, and almost rather than changing. You'd have to make a lot more change to change everything to shell.
I can just do a look up, which.
Yeah, what should be, for, shell is more policy type language, it's script.
Yeah.
Shell is, my my world lives with shell.
Okay, yeah.
So I'll, I can change all that.
And just make sure when you do that, make sure that will isn't, it's it's always kind of a prescriptive will, like, you know, so and so will do this. Rather than this will happen, so. With those change.
I have one other, I have one other comment, on the, right in the middle of page thirteen, over red, allocation will consider four criteria. But then I only see three bullets.
It used to have four. So, but I'll, yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. This is what happens when you do a lot of, um, yeah, versions.
Yes.
You get, you get a certain amount of chaos, and it's inevitable, now this will get another read when this is presented to the board. Uh by a sharp eyed.
Yes, yes.
Directors, and so this isn't the last chance for edits, but. Give them something, give them something nice, clean, I think it's.
And the staff report will be much clearer. So and I was debating whether to include a copy of the old. Policy. So people can, I mean, we've been reviewing it, but so we can see the old versus.
I think that, I think that'd be smarter.
And you said that there was a fourth one that you had taken out, or that that was there and just removed?
It it just wasn't really a factor.
Okay.
It, yeah.
So. Entertain a motion, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of edits that have been um. It's noted, and I guess it had been, you know.
Oh, are we recommending that we send it to the board at this time, or are we gonna fix it and bring it back to Jack?
I think we wanted, it's on our board agenda for December.
Oh, December.
Yes.
I think we want to send it with these changes, none of these changes are subsequent to, they're all.
Yeah.
Matters of presentation in my, you know, in title, languages.
And when I make, I mean, I plan on making these changes right today, just so it was fresh, so I mean, I can send everyone in this committee.
I was just wondering which way we're gonna go. Yeah, I would, I would move that we um. Uh. Recommend the advised budget. Um. Policy being forwarded to the board for their approval with the changes and and recommendations uh that we've made today.
That's fine with me, uh go here a second. We got a little seconds. Uh, hold on, hold on, person.
Hi.
Miguel.
Hi.
I'm Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Chrisman.
Hi.
For a motion passes four zero, we work. Uh. This is a complicated. A task in, in getting revisions, things can be very. Pass expand by the. Uh, our final uh agenda item. Is, I think feature agenda items. Yes, does anyone? On committee? Have an agenda item and you'd like to see uh taken up?
Other than making sure that we have discussed and consider the report from revenue. Enhancement. Add on.
Yeah, that's, that's in January. Uh. Yeah, but, Ms. Chris, do you have anything that you'll see coming? Will have coming, just some, just for mission purposes. January, we would have, healthy audit.
Uh, we're, I'm working on it. So, yeah, I have a revenue enhancement report, uh we may have an audit on there, but I would like to know. As it is progressing, because I have to, given a common, I have to wait for that to be able to give us the report back. So I, I don't know if it will be ready in June, but I'll have to ask them. But I'll put it on my list as.
Something is, something.
Yeah, um.
But are.
And we will, I will meet with the, so I'm maybe do another subcommittee report out because I will meet with the revenue. Uh policy committee in January before our finance committee meeting, we'll probably have something to report out for that. Um. Do you think maybe right off of that, in the new year, we should talk about. Uh the overhead allocation and discuss like how we want to move forward with reviewing that?
I think, yeah, I think, I was thinking of, of going back to that and again, getting uh. Reviewing the ad hoc committee membership, seeing who wants to be invited, so forth, if that's always the thing to do. And, and the ad hoc committees, I think, yes, we, we should um discuss the uh. The updated task for the out, for the allocation. Particularly overhead allocation, not just strictly.
And so we could create a new subcommittee, not the budget policy committee.
Yeah. It could be the same people, but. Brand, rebrand.
So.
Don't leave us any public comment on our agenda items. So, um. No further.
Yes.
Yeah, I had a question, it's, it's a protocol question. So like when we have a document like that, that we're going to review and it's, we may get it, well. A month before we're gonna actually sit down and talk like today. Are we allowed to communicate directly with you, what, we spot something that's, some, because some of this stuff is really low hanging fruit, it's um. Are we allowed to go outside this committee to, to, to just point something like that out? Or does it need to, does it need to be presented?
We're talking about this.
You're talking about something like, well.
Thank you, question, I think uh. You know, um, to my mind. Substance, substantive change would be, it's just one thing and then some of the stuff you're talking, most stuff you're talking about, it was matter of wording, kind of word, just some typos.
I feel like it's grammatical, I mean, I mean, and I don't know the, like.
I don't know what the law says either on that exactly.
But um if someone wants to send me grammatical changes and just include Tom or Mr. Gray, sorry, in the um. In the communication, so uh that to me seems like appropriate. And then also, and I was gonna, you know, offer to you and any new members, um I have had committing each, probably each committee member. Come and sit with me and ask me questions and talk to me and so that is definitely allowed.
Right.
Schedule a meeting.
Yeah.
Um and, and so that's, you know, and, and Ms. Chrisman, I don't know if I've ever really sat with you, I think we.
No, but we've had, we had meetings with Cindy on, on the um.
So that, so you can communicate with me, if it's anything, something we're talking about, potential agenda items, it should go through the chair.
Sure, yeah, it's, well, I think. You've all been where I am, you always, you all had your first meeting here and, and you know, you know, you want to do well, you want to contribute. And there's the, you're at that sharp end of the learning curve, where, where you're.
Yeah.
I'm trying to, I'm, I'm making notes of all the acronyms and abbreviations, so I can, so I can know what, what it all stands for, but um. And the, and the harder I hit the curve, the faster I get to a comfort level for me, so, so I appreciate that offer, I will take you up on that.
The, the, the good news about the ad hoc subcommittees is that they work, that they work with uh staff, Ms. Chris. She's, they, 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 she, she's part of the, part of the process, okay, good, she's your, you know, she gives you information you need and um and, and advice and things like that. So you're, you're working, you're integrated into, see, your ability to communicate with her through that is pretty unlimited, really.
Oh, I see that, yeah, I didn't know if it was legal.
Unconfined, no, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, again, I, anything should include the chair.
Sure, anything to do with the agenda, yeah.
But yes, we can have more discussions on.
Yeah, at some point. You're gonna need to sit down with her and review the budget.
Yeah.
So that you know what you're looking at.
Sure, yeah, because these are all just totals, I don't know how we got from.
And so I did, um, just, I sent an email earlier with the agenda from last month, which includes our first quarter report, so and it's in the same format as our budget.
Okay.
Um so once you review that, I can answer any questions as well as I sent those, um it has the discussion we were talking about earlier about the revenue enhancement. So you can read that staff report and I sent you the two attachments um from the two thousand and five.
Oh, say good.
Yeah, the, the.
Yeah, that was gonna say.
I thank you both for those attachments.
Yeah, yeah.
So you don't have to um.
Yeah.
You can send them that.
I don't know, you took me up on my suggestion of reading the preliminary budget.
Yes.
Because that, the preliminary budget is the best one to read because it has the discussion.
Prior to.
Of, of, of the discussion of everything, I mean, has the.
Yeah.
The, the um, the, the background, historical background and the discussion of all the issues, trade-offs and, and what the departments do. Has the overall, it, it has, it has, that is the, is, as we were saying, that's the meat and potatoes budgets. The final budget is to strip down version actually without all that preliminary material. Uh and different, you know, additional numbers, you know, categories of reserves and, and holdovers and encumbrances. But that preliminary budget is the one that is the public, is what you should really study, I think, I would agree, I'm, I'm, make sure you agree too, right?
That, that is the preliminary budget, yeah, it has the longer, more extensive.
More explanation of things.
Yeah, and I also am adding to the January agenda, the second quarter report.
Okay.
I went and looked at last year, what we did on that in January.
Yeah, so that's a, good, good, let me look at that, good, okay. Anybody else have anything, questions? Welcome aboard again and I hope, thanks very much.
Hope it hasn't been too overwhelming.
Thank you, uh, thank you to staff. Uh everybody have a great holiday, we're gonna, this is, holidays a little bit, Chris is a little bit far away, but we're not meeting until January, so um. I hope everybody has a great end of the year. Meeting is here by your, well, eleven nineteen AM.